Of course, Mr. Ford. It's a question not a we're going to have a full hearing on this in another day.
I understand. And for the record, I am a neighbor of this. I live about a block and a half away up at the top of Payne Road. So I look directly down on this. I've lived in town about 30 years. And this is a big part of community life in the Arnold Mills District. So I've got a bunch of questions, just probably the most important one. Or important. The environmental considerations. First of all, is there a choice? Probably the preceding question would be have you analyze it with respect to environmental considerations that would be best suited to restoring the now. Armchair expert here contention that the ecosystem there has been obliterated over the past couple of years. Uh, the second issue I think is important in Rhode Island in general, and this is not accusatory towards this fine town council, but. Is there a way to determine that proper maintenance would have extended the useful life of the prior dam? Uh, the town bought this. It was almost immediately analyzed that it was in poor condition. What could have been done with proper maintenance at that point in time? Could it have prevented this and perhaps had a more orderly segue to a newer dam? And finally, given the ferocity of storms and the current weather patterns, and that's not a comment to global warming, but I think we can all agree that the current weather patterns are difficult. Um, should it actually be built to higher tolerances? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Before we answer, I'll just see if there's anyone else who has a question you can answer from right in the row. Everybody else is good? Okay, again, we will be having a hearing on this matter where you get to voice your opinion if anything pops up at a later date. And I'm sure all council people will be available uh at a later time if you have a question to ask. Dan, if you could answer those three questions for Mr. Ford.
We can take it. So uh, let's start with the the last item, the the question about should it be built to higher standards? Um, right now, the design is bringing it into compliance with the current um Rhode Island DEM dam safety design criteria. There is always the ability for a dam owner to decide to design it for a greater storm event. And if that was a decision that was reached by the the council or by the the town, uh, we could do so. But again, right now it's being designed to the 500 year storm event um to meet the state's criteria, which is new. And does represent an increased capacity over what was originally in place. The second question that you asked, is there a way to look back and say, hey, if we had done X, Y, and Z, we could have stopped the failure? No, unfortunately, the the records, you know, to just prior to the the dam failure really don't um. Exists to a degree that would allow that level of forensic evaluation to go back in Monday morning quarterback. Um, what could have should have been done, but I can say that um dams that are regularly maintained um do last longer.
Thank you.
Uh, the first question, I'm not sure that I actually heard a full question in there about the environmental considerations. I don't. Know if that was trying to talk more towards a removal and restoration of the uh natural stream channel versus a repair, but uh I'm sorry, I didn't follow that question.
Yeah, well, help yourself if you want to go speak to him and I can continue on with the meeting. Okay?
I'm more specific.
Like I said, having lived there for half a lifetime, I I looked and I went by again today and I see a completely different landscape. I'm not an environmental engineer, but it strikes me that there's been real devastation of the the priorly prior existing ecosystem. Is there one of these designs that would be would facilitate at a greater rate a return to the prior ecosystem? Or is that even possible at this point? Is that uh, that's good?
Thank you.
Both of the rehabilitation designs as Dan very uh clearly um described would return us back to the pool level that we had. So that would both of those will get you back to where you were before the dam failed. The dam um removal would take a longer time to stabilize a new ecosystem that would be established in a different um different climate. Um, environmental climate than what was there prior to the dam failure.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Ford, for your questions. So uh, with no further.
Do you want to echo in my mic for some?
Yes, sure.
Just checking. So with respect to Mr. Ford's question about maintenance and he's arrived at this issue a little late, but I I do believe that had. Proper and we've talked about this in the past, I do believe that we would not be here uh tonight had there been proper maintenance uh on that dam. So just to be, I I appreciate uh the response from Par, but um. I don't want to, I'm not going to relitigate the the entire issue, but I I. I strongly believe that proper maintenance, we wouldn't be here tonight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting. Well, the number sixteen, twenty five, uh, the four three two four seven thirty eight. And for the rapid oil council members, I will be present. The next time our general is to pleasure the listeners, please stand. I will leave you. My life, I'm in the space of America and just the girl. Come on, you got it. The invisible, literally, you got the system. Thank you. Then I have a young, you get a lot of, you want to only get a little nonsense, but you like to get. I'm sure.
Yes, I just wanted to wish the new eleven boys baseball team who are in the state championships right now, probably games that are going on, so I wish them the best. Thank you.
Anyone else? When they mount, we're going to be kind of, I want, which is our consent agenda. If more time to remember, because we have a agenda, I think the most you will do. Joining the town for sharing, seven five times when you build.
All in favor to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, hearing none, the consent agenda passes by a vote of seven to zero. Next item on our agenda is our first public comment. If anybody in the chamber would like to address the council, please feel free to step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is the.
Uh, with regard to this public comment, I'm speaking about the agendized item. To approve the Boroughville Town Council Resolution number twenty five dash twenty five, which is relating to the Access to Public Records Act, otherwise known as APRA. Their resolution speaks glowingly of the increased costs to municipalities of conforming with a newer, stronger APRA law. And to that, I would say, oh, well, the current APRA laws are woefully inadequate. Uh, I could tell you, for example, my experience here in Cumberland, on the few APRs that I've submitted have been responded to on a very timely basis, but have been incredibly incomplete. Uh, with regard to other municipalities in the area, areas like Pawtucket. Well, let's let's just go down briefly their objections, expanding disclosure of police reports not resulting in arrests. I don't see the problem in that. We need to have a complete transparency with regard to policing, not for any reason here in Cumberland. We've got a fine police department in Cumberland. But generally speaking, that can change over time in our communities like Pawtucket, which are clearly in distress. Requiring the release of final internal affairs reports, of course we should. The number of police officers in this state who probably should qualify for some type of exclusionary status in their ability to testify before court. I would consider large, the area I've spent time in, mandating body worn camera footage to be released within 30 days. Of course, that's the point. Removing protections for communications between elected officials and their constituents. We need to be an open book. Then again, while that problem may not exist here in Cumberland, that subject has changed and exists clearly in Providence and Pawtucket, amongst other places, specifically Pawtucket. Relating to nine one one call audio and related electronic transmissions. Absolutely. Expanding the arrest record reporting window from five to third days, absolutely. Reducing, and this is a particularly difficult, if you happen to work in the independent media as I do, a barrier that's often thrown up. In front of media sources is the outrageous attempts to charge completely discretionary fees based on the political nature of the APRA request. That needs to be strictly limited, all right? Uh, proposing a procedure for dealing with set vexation requests, vexations requests that will not be helpful or effective. Well, again, that's in the eye of the beholder. I look at the Nicole Solis situation in South Kingstown, where the Department of Education in South Kingstown repeatedly refused to answer any questions at all. She became nationally famous for submitting hundreds of APRA's, at which point this the school department tried to sue her. Um, perhaps just being open. In the beginning would save that. And again, these are problems not largely present in Cumberland, but are issued statewide. Uh, proposing a procedure for dealing with vexations and questions to that imposing increased civil fines on public officials. I could tell you that I personally was involved in two protest violations of the Open Meeting Act. With the Pawtucket Mayor Donald R. Grevian, who has not yet to be fined. So there's essentially really no. There there's just simply no. Penalty be paid for this type of behavior. Again, I could spend an hour writing a complaint to the Attorney General about the stunning lack of information in my most recent APRA with the town of Cumberland. I could do that, but again, the system is set up to discourage that because of the months. It takes to get any solutions whatsoever. And as a result, the bald faced role of government in trying to hide. And again, just a a famous alumni of the town of Cumberland, uh Governor Daniel McKee has faced numerous challenges at the state level because of their failure to uh abide by APRA. And also their willingness to charge outrageous fees. We've had situations where two different media organizations have fundamentally asked the same question and gotten wildly different fees. So the there is very little transparency in Rhode Island government in general. It needs to be addressed. And when I see a town complaining about this and the onerous cost, well, there's a simple solution. Just publish everything right away. And guess what? It's there to be seen and you'll have no APRA request and you'll have no APRA complaints. And if you move the goalposts on people, well, that's when you develop frustration, distrust. And very often the tragedy there is that these are minor politicized issues that create a sense of distrust among the electorate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. I let you go a little bit longer than you, but uh, point well taken. Thank you so much. Anyone else like to speak to the council on any topic? I see no one in the chamber. I'll go virtual. Is anybody joining us virtually? Okay. Next item on our agenda from public comment, we're going down to reports and communications. We have a presentation of the Ross and Ron, uh Ross and Pond DM Design. Uh, base report from Par Corporation. Uh, Pa? Welcome, gentlemen.
Um, do you have the presentation?
Uh, we do here, but I'm, do you have it uh? Visible? So just state your name for the from Par.
Yep, I'm uh, I'm Dan Malaney. I'm sorry, I'm Dan Malaney. I'm an engineer from Par Corporation. I'm here to uh to speak to you about Ross and Pond, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
So I guess you want me to start without the presentation?
Oh, you can get it up. I I if it's going to take long to load it, I just want the public to see what we're dealing with too as you speak.
Okay.
You know, while we're waiting, if anybody's waiting for other issues, if we don't mind, I'll. We have some eight uh things that are going to be tabled. So I'll start ordinance twenty five oh seven. It's an ordinance amending the code of ordinances. Uh, amending the zoning ordinance in map derelict with reference to Cumberland assessors plat zero fifty three seventeen eighty one. The hydroelectric generation facility, if anybody's here for that, we're going to be tabling that uh to our next meeting. Yes, September seventeenth. Yep, September seventeen. We ready to go? Yeah, no problem. I got more to go. Going down, if anyone is here for ordinance twenty five sixteen and ordinance clarifying no parking zone on Ryan Avenue, we're going to table that to September third. I'll keep going. Anybody here for ordinance twenty five seventeen? We have an ordinance naming sixteen Mill Street, that's uh eight feet two lot ninety six, the Emerald Building. That is going to be tabled until September third. Ordinance twenty five. What was that, please? Yeah, that's okay. Twenty five eighteen, ordinance twenty five eighteen. It's an ordinance amending the zoning on us related to contract construction service and buffer requirements. We're going to table that to September third as well. Okay, so anybody here for those are not going to be heard tonight. Actually have Dan stay to the side a minute and I can go ahead with the other two. We'll just keep moving. All right, the next thing on our agenda, and I'll go back to uh the pond very shortly, I promise. Uh, report out of executive sessions that may be necessary. The council has took no votes and we have none to report. I'm going to go to the next. We have an update from the school committee. Chairwoman Vogel is here. Chairwoman, welcome.
Good evening, Amy Vogel, Ten Wampum Trail, Cumberland. Um, the big uh report out tonight is the many projects going on this summer. We are finishing community elementary school. There's six science labs in McCourt Middle School, the six science labs in North Cumberland Middle School. The transitional building that has been used to house the elementary schools is now going to back to the first floor preschool remodel. The transitional building's second floor remodel will be back to the high school. Ashton School Playground, Cumberland High School lighting project, and finally BF Norton shoveling the ground late August, early September. So we're very big, very busy in the Cumberland School District at this moment. Any questions?
Just one. Yes, of course. So BF Norton will, students will remain on campus while this new school is built. How will the school department manage recess for students?
I a hundred percent do not know that, but I will find that out for you and get back to you. I know there is a plan in place, but I'll check with the building committee as well. And I have a school committee meeting tomorrow night, so I'll make sure to get that answer for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, President Kitch. Thank you, council members. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. I think we're up and ready to go. Thank you, Ms. King. So Dan, thank you for waiting while we took care of some business. And please proceed.
Absolutely. Apologize for the delay. Uh, so once again, I'm Dan. I'm an engineer uh here to speak to you about Ross and Pond Dam on behalf of Par Corporation. Um, so for those of you who are unaware of the dam, uh, it's an earthen embankment dam approximately twelve feet tall, a hundred and fifty feet wide. And it formerly had formerly had a uh a granite and timber primary spillway approximately thirty feet wide, which you see on the picture in the picture on the right there. In uh in January of last year, that spillway failed, uh resulting in a almost complete loss of the impoundment, Ross and Pond. Par Corporation was retained by the town at that point to design a temporary cofferdam to partially restore the impoundment. Uh, um, which was installed in fall of last year, uh, and you can see that on the left hand side there. So it's a bulk bag cofferdam uh with a riprap slope to provide stability and scour protection. Uh, the bulk bags are the the line of white that you see in the back in that right hand picture. Um, so go get next slide, please. Um, so. Following the installation of the cofferdam, uh, the town hired Par to come up with some conceptual designs uh to permanently replace or remove Ross and Pond Dam. Uh, a big part of the conceptual design uh was looking at the hydraulics of the spillway. Uh, the state of Rhode Island uh DEM dam safety program has come out with new hydraulic requirements for dams recently uh that the former spillway would not have met. And as the dam is being replaced, uh, the replacement is required to meet these new um higher requirements. Slide please. Um, another. Part of the the design process was doing subsurface explorations. Um, so you can see in the photograph on the right, it's a little bit small, but there are three red dots. Uh, those represent geotechnical borings that were completed through the left and right abutments of the spillway. And those were used to evaluate the soils on site uh and develop the soil profile that you see in the larger picture on the left. So you can see uh that that layer of green is assumed fill. The layer of orange, the thin layer between the green and the blue is um swamp deposits, which are, it's sort of a two to three foot layer of weaker silt. Um, and then below that in the blue, what you see is terrace deposits, which are, you know, stronger sands and gravels uh with a little bit of silt. Slide please. Uh, so the first conceptual design that we reviewed uh was a cast in place concrete spillway. Um, so this would effectively be a a concrete wall following the alignment of the former failed spillway. But expanded in width from the original thirty five feet out to eighty five feet um to allow the dam to meet those higher hydraulic requirements. Um, and this would tie into the currently existing, you know, masonry walls on the left and right sides of the former spillway. Uh, and those masonry walls are shown in orange there. Uh, the the spillway is shown in the green and pink. Uh, and then up in the top, that picture you see there is Arnold Mills Pond Dam, uh, which is, you know, a reservoir upstream still in the town of Cumberland. Uh, and that's approximately what a concrete spillway might look like. Um, just for example, and we expect that this would cost one point eight to three point two million, somewhere in that range. Slide please. Um, and then the second design alternative that we reviewed. Was a sheet pile wall spillway. Uh, so what this would look like is essentially driving steel sheet piles through the existing um bulk bag cofferdam. And uh, and reusing the existing riprap slope that you saw in the initial slide of, you know, for scour protection. Um, but that sheet pile wall would be at at the former dam elevation instead of the current cofferdam elevation. So it would, you know, restore the full impoundment. Same goes for that concrete cantilever as well. Um, so you can see in that photo on the top left what this might look like, uh, minus the bridge in this case. But essentially you have a lower portion of the steel sheet pile with concrete cap that the water flows over. And that's represented by the green in the schematic below. Um, and then it's sort of, you know, offsets up and extends out tying into native grades. Uh, it's the left and right, which is what you see in the purple on that schematic drawing. Um, and we expect this would cost one point one to two million. Slide please. Um, and then finally, we reviewed removal of the dam. Um, anybody who drove by the site between, you know, roughly February and November of last year, uh, probably got a pretty good idea of what this would look like. Um, the picture that you see there is very soon after the the former dam, uh, the former spillway's failure. Um, but in this case, if we were to formally remove the dam, we would be revegetating the impoundment area um and allowing it to restore to a wetland. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't look like a a big mud puddle like what you see there. Um, we expect that this would cost around five hundred thousand dollars. Um, however, there's a lot of variability in that depending on uh what we found. A a big driving factor could be if the sediments within the impoundment are impacted by the former dam activity on site. Um, that could add a lot of costs to removal. So you'd have to remediate that. Next slide, please. Um, so these three alternatives and the studies that went into uh developing them were were developed into a design report that was submitted to the town. Um, and I believe posted on the town's website, if I'm not mistaken. Um. So now that that's out, the the next steps are effectively the the town selects which of these three approaches they would like to move forward with. Um, and we prepare final, final documents and a final design. Um, you know, get. Construction ready plans and specifications prepared. Uh, get permits for those plans and specifications. And then once all permits are received, uh, we can start construction. So that's. Effectively all I've got for you tonight. Are there any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Let's sweep.
Um, in the larger report, um, on page two dash five, under cultural resources. Um, you point out that for the temporary dam, it wasn't necessary to look at, you know, if this needed to be on the National Register of Historic Places, but for a permanent solution, it would be. Um, would that determination affect any, like what design choices could be done? Would it raise costs? You know, what would happen if they said, yes, this should be on the National Register of Historic Places?
So it depends on which design we were to go with. Um. Ideally with the sheet pile cofferdam, there would be fewer impacts because that's effectively all being built upstream of the former structure. So it shouldn't impact that. Um, as far as the concrete cantilever design. I don't think we have enough information at this point for me to answer that, but I can certainly uh. You know, review it and come back to you on that.
Okay. That was one of, just one of the things that really jumped out. So I don't have anything else right now.
Thank you, counselor. Are there any other questions? Could I just ask about time? When we did pick one, obviously it depends on which one we would choose, if any. Uh, would there be a timeframe to to put that? I know it's was listed here, but for anybody who doesn't have this up.
Um, so I'd say, you know, preliminary, we we would need probably, say, four months for design. Um, and then, you know. Yeah, six to twelve months for permitting. Um, a lot of that depends. Army Corps, I believe we just heard back today or yesterday that Army Corps is changing some of their permitting process. Um, which we expect could, it shouldn't add any time, but it certainly could. Um. And then once the permitting is complete, we expect probably a six to twelve month construction process. That's not to say that there'll be six months or twelve months worth of boots on the ground. Um, but, you know, getting a contractor, getting them out there um in time of year restrictions could be a big part of that, depending on when the permits are received back.
I have another.
Counsel, sweep.
Um. In the, again, in the larger report, you also mentioned that the existing, um, you know, temporary fix is good for two years. Would, does that, in your opinion, put some pressure on us to decide more quickly? Or is that just like, that's what it should be, but if it's a little bit longer?
So I believe the way that the permit for that is written, um, what DEM said is that. At the two year point, the town needs to be in the process of replacing the dam. So that's not to say that if we hit two years since that cofferdam went in and we don't have, you know, sheet piles going in, we've got to. Tear this thing out and boost the impoundment. Uh, you know, I think if if a good faith effort is being made to drive the design forward, you know, a decision has been made and we're working on it. But, you know, particularly if we're waiting on permits from Rydam, you know, I I don't suspect that that would be an issue.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, another one, Dan, if you don't mind, the spillway versus the sheet pile. What's the difference for like longevity? I know, again, it's detailed, but they don't have the presentation or the report that goes with it. What uh, what is the time, time difference of time? Yeah, yeah, life, exactly. Thank you.
So I would say the the concrete cantilever wall, we would expect about a one hundred year lifespan out of that. Um, and the the steel sheet pile, it depends, you know, you can put a coating on the steel sheets, but. When you, you know, during the driving process, a lot of that coating is probably going to be scraped off. Um, for the steel sheet pilot would really, I would say the town would need to determine, you know, what design life they are looking for out of it. And then what we would probably do is oversize the sheet such that the rate at which it deteriorates, you know, will not. Like there will still be enough steel left with the deterioration uh that it can last that design life. So it it kind of, it comes down to what the desired design life is, I think. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, that we can design the sheets to last a hundred years. It. We can.
And it's a lot of things that will depend on credit production in the extra, by the time you hit a hundred years, she said, yes, it's the.
What kind of maintenance? So this doesn't happen again if we build this, and this is a lot of money. What does the town's requirement? To keep this dam up, so this does not happen again?
So both of these designs should be fairly low maintenance. Um. I think a big part of it will be keeping the vegetation and trees off of the dam so that the conditions at the dam can be, you know, monitored a lot easier. Um, also, both of these would include a low level outlet that would need to be exercised regularly uh to keep it working. Um, other than that, you know, as far as the concrete goes, it's essentially just inspecting it every few years and then, you know. Cracks will come up and as you see them, you know, they need to be sealed. With the steel, Matt, can you speak to the maintenance on that? I don't have experience with that.
Good evening. My name is Matt Valyle. I'm a colleague of Dan's from Par Corporation. Dan's correct, the the concrete, you need to seal any cracks that may develop. Also, any joint materials that may be included in the final design, design would need to be maintained. Very similar for the concrete cap, the steel sheeting would be to maintain that concrete itself in a good condition. And then to inspect the steel sheeting on a regular basis to make sure that the rate of corrosion is what is expected and that we don't have any holes that are generating within the steel sheeting itself. Other maintenance would be keeping debris off the spillway, making sure that we're not increasing the pressure on the the structure. Just general operations and maintenance that should be capable, possible utilizing the town forces.
Thank you. So proper maintenance could get the spillway or the sheet pile to the same life expectancy as the other one? I think you know I'm going with this. Obviously, we're always looking for the least expensive way to achieve the issue for the taxpayer and but we want the thing right. I just want to make sure, you know, we're not just sometimes when you chase price, you get what you pay for and we don't want that, you know?
Yep, I understand. You're looking for the lifecycle type cost on the structures. Through proper maintenance, you can definitely get them to both provide the same service life. I think the steel sheet pile may require a little bit more on the crack repair and a little bit more of that regular maintenance, but not a significant amount. I say that because the steel sheet pile does have a little bit of flex that can occur in it. And it just may lead to some some cracking that needs to be sealed on a more regular basis. But in general, regular maintenance will get you to the same.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counsel McGill, so we have the Public Brick Superintendent here. Would we be able to maintain this dam the way they just described? I watered the pond?
I can't, let me help. Oh, if you don't mind. Well, town forces from both the Water Department and the Highway Department would would take on that task.
Okay. Could I, Mr. Shaw?
No matter, it doesn't matter. So with the increase of like water, just in the world, these, these, you know, the rainfall, the flow, the the levels is, has all that sort of been sort of considered also with the designs? You know, you're putting stick figures against, you know, metal figures, for example, like you increase the flow of the water or the 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 capacity of the pond increases and it puts more strain on the sheet metal one. I mean, that's all, that's all figured in, I would assume. Just wanted to make sure I asked the question before, when we're coming up with an answer that 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 is the case, because there's no question. We are seeing more water.
Yes. Yeah, no, absolutely. They're they're both designed to be able to meet the thousand year storm, if I'm not mistaken. Sorry, it's either the thousand or the five hundred year storm. That should be on the second slide, I think. Five hundred year, yeah, sorry, five hundred year storm. And they're both designed to have at least one foot of freeboard during that. So as climate change makes these storms larger, you know, it might eat into that extra foot of freeboard that we have at the dam. But, you know, we're not, we're designing it to have a little bit of extra capacity when we put it in. The stability analyses were also designed such that it can withstand water at the maximum level that's expected during that five hundred year storm indefinitely, which is a conservative design case, because during that storm, you know, the impoundment's only going to be at that maximum level for, you know, a matter of maybe minutes or hours. This is designed to be able to handle that if it was to sustain for for weeks. Additionally, we designed this not accounting for the upstream dams. So Diamond Hill Reservoir Dam and Arnold Mills Reservoir Dam are both upstream of this. And would ideally during these larger storms be attenuating some of the flows that are coming in. And in this case, we're assuming that both of those reservoirs are full and are just basically flowing over when the storm hits, which is a worst case scenario and I would say fairly unlikely to occur. And void unlikely to occur.
Sure. And the height, it's like, is it the original height of the dam or is it a little bit more within any design minimum expectations that it would have to meet?
So it doesn't look like we need to raise the embankment. But the spillway is wider. So the spillway by being wider is going to allow more flow through, which is going to reduce the height that the impoundment raises to during the storm.
So so when the dam is completed, I guess my question is, is the water level is going to go back to what it was before? Would it be a little bit more because you had to increase the height of the spillway due to any regulations?
No, no, sorry. I apologize. I'm just going to say, yes, it will be the same as it was before.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
If I'm just one. So we know what happened when the last dam reached its end of life and collapsed. What would happen when each of these dams reaches its end of life and collapses? What would that look like? Do we know? So all the water left, you know, the current situation, would would that happen in this case? Do you see the picture I'm trying to?
Yeah.
Understand.
And the goal would be that as you start to approach your service life and as you do the regular operations, maintenance and inspections, you identify that when the dam is reaching deficiencies and it doesn't fail. We don't project what that looks like. You saw what it looks like. That's what you'd see again. But the idea is that you've created a system and then create an operations and maintenance program so that you prevent that from happening in the future.
So you could make repairs to the dam to extend its life?
Yes, we repair many dams that are have exceeded their normal service life, depending upon the deficiencies. Repairs are then designed and executed of various stages to extend that service life into the future.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam, may I?
Members of Par, on obviously on this issue over the past month, if you look at the report on five, two and five, three, it does put the design life of both options. Is it just my mic or both options that in excess of fifty years if maintained properly, we did discuss clearly, maintenance was an issue that led to where we are today. So but if you do look at five, two and five, three, it basically puts them at the you know, at the same lifespan. So I just wanted to make note of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Dan, can you just hold them? I just want to get an opinion. Again, Madam Solicitor, it's agenda and there's a lot of people here. And ladies and gentlemen, we are going to have, obviously, a proper vote in a public hearing when we're going to approve one or the other. But why so many people are here? Could I at least just take questions from anybody that's here?
Yeah, you can do whatever you want. A public comment is allowed at any time.
Okay.
It's just not required.
No, I just want to make sure that everybody might have a question that we might have missed and why pause here and it
I would suggest that you take the questions all at once and then have them answer it just to make it more efficient.
Okay, so I'll just have people come up with one question and then just kind of keep track of them and then you can answer these. Is anyone in the audience in the chamber would like to ask a question on this that we might not have missed? Of course, Mr. Ford. It's a question, not a, we're going to have a full hearing on this in another day.
I understand. And for the record, I am a neighbor of this. I live about a block and a half away up at the top of Payne Road, so I look directly down on this. I've lived in town about thirty years. And this is a big part of community life in the Arnold Mills District. So I've got a bunch of questions, just probably the most important one. They're all important. The environmental considerations. First of all, is there a choice? Probably the preceding question would be, have you analyzed it with respect to environmental considerations that would be best suited to restoring? But now armchair expert here contention that the ecosystem there has been obliterated over the past couple of years. The second issue I think is important in Rhode Island in general, and this is not accusatory towards this fine town council, but is there a way to determine that proper maintenance would have extended the useful life of the prior dam? The town bought this. It was almost immediately analyzed that it was in poor condition. What could have been done with proper maintenance at that point in time? Could it have prevented this and perhaps had a more orderly segue to a newer dam? And finally, given the ferocity of storms and the current weather patterns, and that's not a comment on global warming, but I think we can all agree that the current weather patterns are difficult. Should it actually be built to higher tolerances? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Before we answer, I'll just see if there's anyone else who has a question. You can answer them right in a row. Everybody else is good? Okay, again, we will be having a hearing on this matter where you get to voice your opinion if anything pops up at a later date. And I'm sure all council people will be available at a later time if you have a question to ask. Dan, if you could answer those three questions for Mr. Ford.
We can tag team. So let's start with the the last item, the the question about should it be built to higher standards? Right now, the design is bringing it into compliance with the current Rhode Island DEM dam safety design criteria. There is always the ability for a dam owner to decide to design it for a greater storm event. And if that was a decision that was reached by the the council or by the the town, we could do so. But again, right now it's being designed to the five hundred year storm event to meet the state's criteria, which is new and does represent an increased capacity over what was originally in place. The second question that you asked, is there a way to look back and say, hey, if we had done X, Y, and Z, we could have stopped the failure? No, unfortunately, the the records, you know, to just prior to the the dam failure really don't exist to a degree that would allow that level of forensic evaluation to go back in Monday morning quarterback. What could have should have been done? But I can say that dams that are regularly maintained do last longer.
Thank you.
The first question, I'm not sure that I actually heard a full question in there about the environmental considerations. I don't know if that was trying to talk more towards a removal and restoration of the natural stream channel versus a repair, but I'm sorry, I didn't follow that question.
Yeah, well, help yourself. If you want to go speak to him and I can continue on with the meeting. Okay?
I'll be more specific.
Like I said, having lived there for half a lifetime, I I looked and I went by again today and I see a completely different landscape. I'm not an environmental engineer, but it strikes me that there's been real devastation of the the priorly prior existing ecosystem. Is there one of these designs that would be, would facilitate at a greater rate a return to the prior ecosystem? Or is that even possible at this point? Is that, that's good?
Thank you.
Both of the rehabilitation designs, as Dan very clearly described, would return us back to the pool level that we had. So that would, both of those will get you back to where you were before the dam failed. The dam removal would take a longer time to stabilize a new ecosystem that would be established in a different, different climate, environmental climate than what was there prior to the dam failure.
Thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Ford, for your questions. So with no further
To let it echo in my mic for some issue, just checking. So with respect to Mr. Ford's question about maintenance and he's arrived at this issue a little late, but I I do believe that had proper, and we've talked about this in the past, I do believe that we would not be here tonight had there been proper maintenance on that dam. So just to be, I I appreciate the response from Par, but I don't want to, I'm not going to relitigate the the entire issue, but I I strongly believe that proper maintenance, we wouldn't be here tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving down on the agenda, there's no further discussion. We're going to our monthly quarterly and financial reports ending June twenty twenty five. Does anyone have any question on the monthly quarterly or financial reports ended in June of twenty five? I'm just giving it a second to clear out. I thought they were here for the financial reports. Okay, so I, there's no questions on the financials. I'm moving down to the check registers. Anybody have a question of a finance director on the check register? Seeing none. We've got a request from the tax assessment review and approve the twenty, June twenty twenty five abatements and supplementals. We have no abatements or supplementals to report.
I'm sorry, I didn't assume of check.
I'm sorry. Melinda, if counsel has a question on the check register.
Just, just one I noticed before Cumberland Animal Age, I'm assuming that's Cumberland Animal Hospital. Is that the one on Pound Road?
Yes.
So, because I noticed there was like fifteen hundred, what do we paying for with those, do you know? You can get back to me. I'm not trying to say that.
Uh, in the animal control budget, right? So if they pick up an animal that needs help or needs assistance, then that's
We leave them there and then, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. So there was no, again, just on the tax assessment to review and approve the supplementals for twenty twenty five, there were no abatements or supplementals. I'm just going down. The next item is G in our agenda, if you're following. Department reports, we've got animal control, building committee, building officials, EMS, library, parks and rec, building and community development, police station, police department, senior services and the town clerk's office. Does anyone have any questions on these reports? Hearing none. Our quarterly reports, our human resources, office, children, youth and learning, public works and the water department. Any questions on those reports? Hearing none. I'm moving down on our agenda. We are now at licenses. I have, I have a vitruellen house license, an application for a second class vitruellen house license from Vindu Foods LLC doing businesses, Vindu, three fifty six Menden Road. If we do approve counsel, it's pending Department of Health retail space permit and fire department approval. Yes, did you want me?
I have a question.
Yeah, good.
Mrs. Tivia. So this is the same business that we're doing the liquor license for next month? Is that true? Vindu?
Yeah. That's that's my mistransfer and including the owner, maybe the not waiting to license it through to hold it. So we could go over that, give the elderly approved, we'd have to, so that even open the doors. We want to bring that to the case, if there's no certain alcohol part and we can prove for the elderly.
So you can serve food but not alcohol?
Is anybody from the establishment here like to address the council? Okay, if there's no further questions, I will take a motion to approve the license with those pending issues with the town clerk's office. So moved by Counsel Shaw, second by Counsel McGill, all in favor of approve, say aye. Any opposed?
No.
The license passes by a vote of six to one with Counsel Sweet in the negative. Next item on our agenda, moving along, we are now at entertainment license. I have an application for a special event entertainment license for Holy, a Fatima Holy Name Society for the annual festival on Friday, August twenty nine, twenty five through Sunday, August thirty first, twenty five. We do approve, it's pending a final tent inspection. Is anyone joining us from Fatima Church? I think we know this festival quite well from over the years. So if there's no other discussion by the council, take a motion to approve. So moved by Counsel Shaw, second by Counsel McGill. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The license passes by a vote seven to zero. I'm moving down on the agenda to an app to application for a special event entertainment license for McCoy Fit for the Ultra Trail Race at the monastery from seven AM on September twenty seventh, twenty twenty five to seven AM on September twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. We do approve, it's pending the insurance certificate and promoter's permit. Is anyone from McCoy joining us virtually? Is uh, anyone from McCoy joining us virtually? They usually come. Nobody here, okay. If they're not here and there's no further questions by the council, I'll take a motion to approve the license. Motion by council McGill. Second by councilor Shaw. All in favor to approve, say aye, is there any opposed?
No.
The license passes by a vote of six to one with uh councilor Sweet in the negative. Moving down on our license application, we have an application for a special event entertainment license from McCoy Fit for their Fit Challenge O C R at Diamond Hill Park on April eleventh, twenty twenty six from seven A M to seven P M. Uh, we do approve, it's pending insurance certificate and promoter's permit. There's no discussion or further comment, I'll take a motion to approve the license. Motion by councilor Shaw, second by council McGill, all in favor, say aye, aye, any opposed?
No.
Uh, the license passes by a vote of six to one with councilor Sweet in the negative. Moving on. Licenses, we have an application for a special event license from Ocean State Brewing Company doing businesses Phantom Farm Brewing for their Phantom Farm Brewing parking lot takeover at Thirty Mountain Street on Saturday on August second, twenty twenty five from one P M to six P M. We do approve, it's pending insurance certificate. Uh, is anybody here from uh Phantom Farm? No, virtually? There's no discussion of the uh or further comment on the license, I will. Council Shaw.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, is this like the same as last year? Is this like a annual thing type of thing? Okay, it didn't say annuals, I wasn't too sure, so. Similar, right? Okay, thank you.
And it's abandoned everything, I think last year it had some kind of blood, don't, don't use it.
But if I'm not mistaken, did they, didn't, look, their license from the state to? I'm sorry? Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, so if there's no further questions on this license, I'll take a motion to approve. So moved by council Mativia. Second by council McGill, all in favor to approve, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? This license passes by a vote of seven to zero. Moving down, we have an application for a special event entertainment license from British Motor Cars of New England for their reunion picnic at Diamond Hill Park on August twenty third, twenty twenty five from eleven A M to two P M. Did I get it right, August third, twenty twenty five? Oh, I'm so sorry, that's vision. Sixty-three years old. Now, August, uh, August third, twenty twenty five from eleven A M to two P M. We do approve council's pending insurance certificate and a lease agreement. Um, is there anybody here from British Motor Cars? What do you have? If there's any discussion and or comments by the council, if none, I will take a motion to approve the license. Council Shaw. Excuse me, McGill.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry.
I didn't know if he actually.
Is there, is there anything else going on at Diamond Hill Park that um, at the new building on that day on August third? That would, this would interfere with it or? We good? I'm not looking to. Okay, I have just a quick question, I don't know if anybody was on, but, okay. Yeah. Because they usually bring in a, a pretty good crowd, right? You know?
If, if you look at says fifty vehicles, expected attendance, one hundred. So.
Not, not sure, you think, should be good.
I think we should. All right.
All right. If, if you're worried about like youth sports and the field, they don't even start till like the third week in August, so.
Or anything about soccer. You know, anything at the lodge or no?
Yeah, lodge, obviously we don't know, but I don't think, they're, they actually, they take early to drive them into the park, so I don't know if there would be an issue like myself.
And just to add, it's from eleven A M to two P M.
Yeah. Plus, I think we have uh Ms. Malloy joining us in a further uh down the agenda. Yeah, could you, could you promote her on that? Mackenzie, how are you?
Hey, how are you, Mr. President? Hello, town council members, uh, there are no events happening on August third at the lodge.
That's the answer, thank you very much.
Just, if I may.
Of course, Council Bolio.
So um, really just more a comment related to the department reports, related to um planning and rec. Um, just thanks to um gosh, I can't remember her name, um, the associate, Mackenzie, the associate director for all the events that they've got planned at Diamond Hill Park. I know she dropped off, but I just wanted to say thank you. It's great.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so getting back to the uh, getting back to the uh license. So, so if there's no further discussion, I'll take a motion to approve the license. So moved by councilor Shaw, second by council McGill, all in favor to approve, say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, the license passes by a vote of seven to zero. Next item on our agenda, we're going down to old business, we have ordinance for public hearing. I did announce some of these at the beginning, so no one had to wait, but ordinance twenty five dash zero seven, we have an ordinance an amendment of the code of ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance and map theory of with reference to Cumberland Sessions, plot zero five three, lot seventeen eighty one and hydroelectric generation facilities. Tables from the June fourth meeting, uh, June fourth, twenty twenty five council meeting. Um, so I uh, I got a motion to table this, or I'll take a motion to table until nine seventeen. Do I have a motion? So moved by councilor Shaw, second by council Bolio and Sweet, all in favor to table, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The um ordinance is tabled until nine seventeen. Uh, FYI, I believe nine two is going to be the ordinance committee, is that correct?
Intuitively, yes, presuming the library is available, thank you.
Thank you. Next, under old business, we're moving down to ordinance uh twenty five fifteen A and ordinance amending the town of Cumberland's water rates, this was tabled from June eighteen, twenty twenty five council meeting. Uh, before we start and I'll turn it over to councilor Shaw in a minute. Uh, I'll need a motion to accept twenty five dash fifteen B in place of twenty five fifteen A. Do I have a motion? Motion by councilor Shaw, second by council McGill, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed? The motion passes by a vote of uh seven to zero and we're now working with uh ordinance twenty five fifteen B. Chairman Shaw.
Thank you, President Kinch, so um, yeah, finance met earlier today to discuss uh the water rates um and after a short meeting, it was uh determined to pass along with favorable a recommendation to the council of two zero vote. Um, this will help uh get the water department in a much more healthier uh much more healthier, we'll leave it like that, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council, so I'm going to open the public hearing on this matter at eight thirty. And uh, Director, do you want us, are you taking this? This matter?
The council president, council members, uh, as you know, the history of the water department has been one of status quo from basically two thousand fifteen to uh right up until uh former uh public works director, Joe Duarte, started to look more deeply into uh the overall budgets of all the departments under his purview. Um, when he, he and I took a look at the water department, you know, we basically came upon the realization that um funds coming from the town's general fund had been subsidizing uh water department expenditures. And one of the reasons that that happened is because from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty two we had zero water rate adjustments. Um, and so that was a, a combination of the water superintendent's determination that uh they may not have been necessary uh in that time period, because he was able to reduce expenditures to the point where, you know, you could achieve a, a neither up or down, which worked for a while. As um Mayor Mutter and I have discussed before, um, the, the water department found itself in much the same position a number of years ago and the water superintendent was able to right the ship and that's the way he did it. He basically made sure that expenditures were less and he was able to what, what happened then going forward was um as he transitioned out, the problem redeveloped and there wasn't that careful scrutiny. And so we find ourselves owing the general fund, you know, this amount of money. Um, long story short, um, two thousand twenty two, right after I started um public works director, former public works director, Joe Duarte and I um went through the process of analyzing everything and, and Director Duarte came up with a very succinct analysis that showed what needed to happen over the next, his analysis was, you know, seven years. Um, and we knew that in order to put anything before the council uh, it should be backed up by a consulting engineer, so Wooded and Curran was brought in and they basically did their analysis, which they're very used to doing for a, a bevy of departments. And lo and behold, it pretty much came out with what the director Duarte had come out with. So it was reassuring to, to know that, hey, you know, we're on the right track. Uh, their report recommended pretty much four percent increases each year for the next eight, nine years or so. Um, and maintaining, you know, a certain level of expenditures would pay back the amount that's owed the general fund. Uh, in discussion with uh the finance subcommittee uh a number of weeks ago uh, the, it went toward is there a way that we can accelerate that process? And the answer to that is yes, there is, and the, the analysis that Joe Duarte and I did was showed that uh, in order to maintain that seven year period, we needed a certain amount. Um, and that amount differed from what Wooded and Curran had determined. And it was because Joe was building in more capital work than what, you know, was relayed to Wooded and Curran. So, you know, it, the difference is expected, that's the bottom line. So in order to um address the, the finance subcommittee's question uh and put something out there that will work, and one of those ways is to take that analysis and implement those increases, which are approximately four percent, they're, they're double what Wooded and Curran is recommending. At least over the next three years and then they will go down commensurately and then eventually will uh in about seven or eight years' time a, a decision will be made that we may not need any increase at all. Um, I've had plenty of discussions with, with uh Director Duarte that really, you know, since nothing in, that we have in the system gets younger, it always gets older. Um, costs never go down, they always go up. There probably should never be a time period when there isn't at least a modest increase in, in water rates, sewer rates. And that's what provides the ability to maintain the system and get the maximum useful life out of the components. So, but that's a whole nother, a whole nother discussion. Uh, what we have in front of you with um the twenty five fifteen B is a version of the, is another version of what you saw um three or four weeks ago. Basically, instead of the four percent increases, now there's a ten percent increase for twenty six and eight and a half percent increase for twenty seven and a six and a half percent increase for twenty eight. This is what's, what's being asked to, for, what's being put in front of you for approval. In addition, uh, the water superintendent and I have gone through and added um fees to the Cumberland rate structure that uh never existed before. And uh, just so you know, they exist in every other water system that, that I've come across. Um, I do believe that they should be in the Cumberland rate structure, so those are being proposed as well. Um, the connections to the system, we've always had a flat five hundred dollar fee. No matter what the type of connection it is, anything from a one inch residential connection to a ten inch connection required to do a subdevelopment. It's the same connection fee that, that can't happen. That, that ten inch connection fee needs to be commensurate with the amount of water going through it, the whole, the whole nine yards, so that's in the proposal. Uh, the other major change is uh an assessment for having a fire line. And uh, there are facilities throughout town that have requested and have been provided larger diameter lines going to their facilities for whatever reason. Um, could be an insurance requirement, could be a fire uh, um, state fire requirement, but uh, they asked for a larger diameter, they were provided with that line and there should be some fee assessed because uh, in addition to whatever they need for domestic, they've been provided fire flow, the, the capability to protect their facility with a certain amount of fire, fire flow. So that's what those fees are for. You've noticed that uh they're not, and they're not right, being recommended to put in place until twenty seven. And the reason for that is because there's a current effort to assess who has those fire lines and to make sure that uh we know that the sizing is accurate so that someone doesn't get a bill and say, hey, this is totally out of left field. So we're building in time to get the word out that this fee is going to be in place to make sure we know uh, facility A has the size line and that they're being built correctly.
Sure, Council Shaw.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, yeah, for those that weren't at the last finance meeting, um, you know, I really appreciate both Director and the, the great conversation and sort of, and discussion about like the, the, this department and then immediately next day saying, we took a second look. Think you're right on something. We're going to come back with something new. Uh, I just want to make sure that um, you know, I, that you're, the thanks from at least myself and and from the committee on behalf of the committee, uh, that um, you know, you participated and and actually took the ideas and, and actually, you know, making the changes necessary regardless what was first presented. And I commend both the administration as well as you, Director, thank you.
Thank you. Council Bolio.
Yep, so question on, um, given that uh the, we were relying on the general fund. How, what's the um, is there like a fiscal note related to the dollars that need to be repaid back? And a strategy for how that will be done?
I think ultimately you, you find that in the financials, but the overall general, I mean, you have to remember some of this gets fluid depending on water usage, but the overall plan here is to, as Director Mendez said would be to uh accomplish that within a five to seven year period.
Sorry, I didn't hear that just tailed off a little bit, Mayor, at the end.
I was afraid of my microphone. Uh. The plan is that uh, that the rates would be sufficient to repay the general fund in a five to seven year period. Of course, you know, as we discussed at the finance committee, they, what you really wanted to have it, you know, is to have a fund balance as well. You should never always, you know, the really, I, I, I explained like, if it was a catastrophic event, maybe, but you should have a, you should have a fund balance that's able to withstand, you know, catastrophic, uh, you know, within reason and uh and uh, not all the general fund, so uh, you know, there, there's some work to be done here, this is, this really is like an important first step.
Okay, and in this ordinance, it talks about a debt reduction surcharge. It's something from some time ago. Does any of that relate to paying back the general fund?
It does not. That is from a prior period where there was an active debt reduction charge on each bill, and that's where it went. But that's old.
That was my understanding too, so thank you for confirming that. Should this debt be removed?
And I would say, so effectively you're doing it inside the rates instead of just placing a certain doll, you know, a certain. So I'm not sure where that is, or I don't, I don't think it necessarily has to be removed, but it's not, it's not, it's not a separate charge. I think because I was around the first time, there was a this occurrence happened, and so we built in so that it would happen, but, I mean, you can, if you built in a deficit reduction, you would lower the rate on, and then you'd increase the, or you'd put in a deficit reduction number. So the plan is to really arrive at the same thing.
Thank you.
I'll just add that, you know, the sewer department found itself and not quite the precarious position, but, you know, precarious enough, and lo and behold, with the adjusting the rates and, you know, bringing up to everything to current standards, we have a fund balance in the sewer department. So that's the goal for the Water Department. In addition to writing, making the town whole, we would want to see a fund balance be, exist as well.
So the goal is to pay off the debt, then work to establish some level versus pay off some of the debt and establish a small fund balance? Or we don't know that? Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, I just want to clarify that the ordinance fifteen twelve, that's referenced, that debt reduction. The language of that is commencing with the billing period after September fourteenth, September two thousand fourteen, and each successive billing period thereafter, there shall be a ten dollar per billing period fee for recovery of debt reduction until such time as that debt is paid in full, but no later than September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. So you're not collecting that, although I think it would be appropriate to remove that language as an amendment, because it's a little bit confusing. You'd have to go back to see if it's really in effect, so.
Okay, so let's get.
I have a question.
Counselor Sweet.
Okay, so from District Four, so obviously always going to be asking questions these days about Lipid, because they've had so many issues. So are we confident that, you know, changing these rates at this level over the next few years is also going to afford some room to take on some of these bigger projects that were maybe left behind when, not just recently, but going way back, these things haven't been really raised as much as maybe they should have been?
So yes, projects like Lipid Estates, projects like Ashton and Berkeley. The goal is to generate the funds necessary to complete those.
And I'd just like to state for the people that might pay attention to some of these meetings and not really understand all of this, because as someone new, I've had to learn a lot of things. You know, if you're sitting at home thinking, well, didn't we just have to increase taxes and now we have to increase water rates? Those are two totally separate things, and only some of us actually get water from the town of Cumberland, and we are the ones that need to bear the burden of that cost, and you can actually find news articles dating back to the eighties of Lipid Estates having problems. And so for a very long time, people benefited from rates held artificially low. And now we're kind of going to have to eat that as the future people that weren't fully taken care of, a bit like the dam, am I right? More or less. Like, I'm not trying to drag anybody under the bus, but it's, you know, it's it's much more expensive to fix something in twenty twenty-five than it was in nineteen ninety, so.
Absolutely correct.
Thank you.
I got a question myself, if no one else has any further comment. Well, I should have asked this in ordinance, excuse me, Finance Subcommittee. What is the average homeowner looking at for an increase in that?
So the in the information that was provided to you, part of the, there's an excerpt from the Wooded and Curran Report, which gives you exactly what that would be. I think with the four percent increase, it amounted to approximately fifteen dollars each billing period. So if we, the twenty-six rate is supposed to be approximately double that, so you could
Do the math.
Yeah, it'd be about thirty dollars per billing period, and that's probably where it's going to come out to.
The next I had, and again, I should to ask this, it just hit to me when other councilors were talking. Did we look at stretching this out? About seven years will be good? Was it feasible to stretch it to ten just to lower that price a little bit, or are we talking?
That's another analysis that could be done. And so we, what would happen is, yeah, that that ten percent could be probably shrunken to eight or seven, but, you know, you're expanding the period. The one, you know, good thing about bringing the Cumberland rates up to the same level as, you know, neighboring systems with fire line fees and connection fees that are appropriate for the diameter pipe going in, is that the combination of the rate increase and those fees that were never in place before that now generate revenue, I believe that five-to-seven-year payback and righting the ship, so to speak, will shorten. So we, you know, we probably, my gut feeling is to leave it there and, you know, maybe in a four-year period, we find ourselves with a, with a, you know, a little bit of tiny fund balance. And that would mean that we paid back the general fund and we're in good condition.
Sooner the better, right? Any other questions? All right, so if there's, should I, Madam, should I strike, Madam Solicitor, should I strike lines twenty-six through twenty-eight and move on before I open the public hearing?
I think that would make the ordinance clearer.
Okay. So, and I don't have to make it a C, right? We can just strike the three lines and we're good.
You're just moving this. You'll be moving to accept this as amended.
Okay, so I will take a motion to strike lines twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight from ordinance twenty-five dash fifteen B. Do I have a? So moved by Counsel, was it Sweet? Second, Bolio, I'm sorry, it's Bolio, second by Counselor Shaw? All in favor to amend, say aye. Okay, now we're dealing with twenty-five dash fifteen B as amended. Are there any further questions of the Director before I go to the public? Thank you, Director. If anybody in the chamber would like to talk on, or comment on twenty-five dash fifteen B as amended? Seeing no one in the chamber, is anybody joining us virtually? Do I have a time on the public hearing? So I got like nine forty-six, is that accurate? Eight forty-six, I'm sorry, eight forty-six. Okay, so there's no one joining us virtually? So I'm going to close the meeting, the public hearing at eight fifty-one. I reserve any comments or motions by the counsel? I got a motion to approve by Counselor Shaw. Second by, second by Counselor McGill. Go to the roll, Counselor Bradley? Counselor Mativia? Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Sweet?
Yes.
Counselor Bolio?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. The ordinance passes as amended by a vote of six to one, six to one, with Counselor Bradley in the negative. Thank you, Counsel. Next item on our agenda, we have ordinance twenty-five dash sixteen. We have an ordinance clarifying a no parking zone on Bryan Avenue. That's presented by Counselor Shaw. I am also going to take a motion to table this to our next meeting, which is September third. Yeah, table, excuse me, nine three. Right, we have a meeting in August. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is twenty-five dash seventeen. We have an ordinance naming sixteen Mill Street, AP Lot Two, Lots, AP Two Lot Ninety-Sixty, the Emerald, name it the Emerald Building, presented by the Counsel President on behalf of the administration. This also will be tabled to nine three, September third. Yep, motion by Counselor Shaw. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Sweet. All in favor to table, say aye. Any opposed? The item is tabled until September third. Thank you. Going down to the next item, we have twenty-five dash eighteen. We have an ordinance amending zoning ordinance relating to contract construction services and buffer requirements. It's presented by Counsel President on behalf of the administration. We also have a request to table this until September third. No further questions or discussion. I'll take a motion to table. So moved by Counselor Shaw. Second by Counsel McGill. All in favor to table, say aye. Any opposed? The item is tabled to September third by a vote of seven to zero. We're moving down to new business. We have appointments. We have a planning board replacement appointment for Mr. Ken Bush. Term expires on January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight. We have a candidate of Mr. Josh O'Neill. I see Mr. O'Neill here. Mr. O'Neill, would you like to make a comment? Not necessary if you don't need to, but if you'd like to introduce yourself?
Just want to say thank you to Madam for thinking of putting me to this open position. I certainly appreciate it, and I'm just happy to be able to serve the people of Cumberland once again. As many of you know, I formerly worked for the town about a decade ago as a town planner. I have a lot of knowledge of the past planning efforts in the town and certainly looking forward to getting involved in this capacity again if the council so approves that tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions about my background.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. It's a pleasure to see you again. Any questions of the applicant? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve, Mr. O'Neill. So moved by Counselor Shaw, second by Counsel McGill. All in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The appointment passes by a vote of seven to zero. Moving down, we have a Board of Canvases replacement appointment replacing Stephanie Gimskey. Term expires on February twenty-eighth, twenty thirty-one. We have one applicant, Mr. Salvatore. I see Mr. Salvatore.
Mr. President, I'm going to recuse for this item.
Yes, note that that she's recusing. Just give her a second to get out of the chamber. Mr. Salvatore? Welcome.
Hello, Counselors. Mayor. Raymond Salvatore, thirty-five Southbury Road. I apologize for the jeans and the shirt. I'm just coming back from Newport on some business and I didn't get a chance to dress up. I did want to thank the mayor and also Tom Kane, Democratic Town Committee Chairperson, for putting my name forth. I believe this is a good fit for myself. I'm looking forward to working with Sandra as well. I do have a flexible schedule. I'm up early and out late, so looking forward to getting back engaged with town situations like this. So if anyone has any questions for me?
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you for your interest.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Without further questions or comments, I'll take a motion to approve the appointment. So moved by Counselor Bolio, second by Counselor Shaw. All in favor to approve, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The appointment passes by a vote of six to one with Counselor Bradley in the negative. Next item, we have Board of Canvases. Alternates, these are life appointments. The first, we have Judge Grebly, Siska. The second, he's an alternate as long with Jason King. Mr. King left his resume for us, which was impressive, and I appreciate that. Mr. King? Yeah, would you like to come up? Thank you for the resume, by the way.
Welcome, President.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself, and the Counselor Shaw might have a question too, if not?
Jason King, twenty-one Fairhaven Road. Good evening, President Kinch, and to the entire council. Mayor Mutter, good evening to you as well. I just want to start off by saying how grateful I am to be here tonight. Grateful for the opportunity to address this council regarding my desire to serve on the Board of Canvases. I just want to take a brief moment to share with the town council, those here in person here tonight, and those watching at home, a little bit about myself, as I'm fairly new here in town. Although nearly every branch of my family tree runs through Cumberland. The King side of my family in particular has a long history of service to this nation and this town. And it looks like I caught the bug too, because I love to serve. I have worked or served at all three levels of the federal government in this country. At the federal level, I served ten years in the Army, including a tour in Iraq, the invasion in two thousand three. I attained the rank of Staff Sergeant E-six, and I'm a disabled veteran. Thankfully, I don't require any accommodations. After returning home from Iraq, I also worked as, at the federal level, as a civilian employee for the Army. At the state level, I worked most, most recently at the Rhode Island Department of Labor and Training. I worked as a Disabled Veterans Outreach Program Specialist, and I assisted my fellow veterans, particularly those with significant barriers to employment. Barriers such as having disabilities, being incarcerated, or being homeless. I had the privilege and pleasure to help my brothers and sisters in arms find suitable employment and gain access for the state of Rhode Island. Prior to that job, I worked in the Massachusetts Senate for four years. I started out as an intern during grad school, was hired on as a full-time legislative aide before I graduated, and quickly rose to the position of Legislative Director, which I faithfully served in until departing. At the local level, I served on the Planning Board and Veterans Council in Southbridge, Massachusetts. And if all goes well tonight, I'll be able to add servant on the Cumberland Board of Canvases to my local government experience. In addition to my work experience, I have a well-rounded educational background that I trust would serve the residents of this town well. I started college a little late in life at thirty-nine years old, but like the old cliche goes, it's never too late to start. I have a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from Rhode Island College. I have a Master of Arts in Sustainable International Development from Brandeis University. And I have a Master of Public Health Certificate in Regulatory Affairs for Cannabis Control from Clark University. In my personal life, I try to get involved wherever I can find myself. I've been an active member of every church I've been a part of. In addition to serving, I also love to teach. I especially love to teach children in Sunday School. I volunteered extensively with organizations both in Massachusetts and Rhode Island that address food insecurity, poverty, and homelessness. I volunteered for disaster relief down in Florida after Hurricane Ivan. I've assembled and personally led teams of recovery experts into Methadone Mile up in Boston to help those enslaved by addiction and mental illness. And over the last decade, I've been on a number of missionary and humanitarian trips. I've gone to India twice. Most recently, I lived in North India for six months last year. And in addition to India, I've also traveled to Haiti, Ecuador, and Russia to help those in need. And I'm pretty sure that this part of my remarks is going to be the one that most people are excited for. In conclusion, Mr. President and town council members, I want to thank you for considering me for this position, and also want to thank you for giving me a few minutes to introduce myself. Lastly, I just want to make one thing clear tonight. Regardless of whether or not I'm selected for this position, I want to let the town council, the administration, and every resident in this town know that if there is anything that I can do to help them, anyone, in any way, personally or professionally, if I can do it, I will, and if I can't, I may know someone that can. Thank you again, and I hope everyone has a blessed evening, and does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. King. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you again, and thanks for the interest.
You're welcome, Mr. President. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay, with that said, if there are no further comments or discussion? Okay, with that said, uh, if there are no further comments or discussion, I'll take a, uh, motion to approve both, uh, both candidates. I can do that at once, Madam Solicitors. Could?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so if there's no further questions, I'll take a, uh, a motion to approve both, uh, got a motion by Counselor Shaw, second by Counselor McGill, all in favor to approve, say aye. Aye, any opposed? The candidates are approved by a vote of seven to zero. Congratulations and thank you again, Mr. King. Um, next item on our agenda, we're moving down now to resolutions. We are at resolution twenty five thirty eight. We have a resolution authorizing and empowering Mayor Jeffrey J. Mutter to enter in a memorandum of agreement with Brown University Med- Medicine at a rate of two hundred an hour for fiscal year twenty twenty five, uh, six, and a rate of two hundred and twenty-five dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty seven. Chief, welcome.
Good evening.
Welcome, Chief.
Um, so this, uh, updated memorandum, uh, MOA, uh, was previously voted on, uh, by the council last year. Uh, this is just, it's an update to reflect, um, one of our EMS physicians, our Assistant Medical Director, Dr. Arrive Zach Smith resigned a few months ago due to, um, personal reasons. Um, she's being replaced with, uh, Dr. Nicholas Valentini, who recently finished his fellowship with us, um, throughout the past year. He's going to be coming on board as our Assistant Medical Director. So this updated MOA reflects that, um, as well as there's a pri- um, a per hour increase starting next October for their fees, um, which is lined out in the, um, uh, MOA, basically going from two hundred dollars an hour to two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. They're contracted for eleven hours a month total. Um, they provide training, uh, QA feedback, um, for calls, and, um, twenty-four, seven medical direction as needed.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions of the chief on this, uh, resolution?
Just one, if I may.
Of course, Counselor Bolio.
I, so I have no objection to this, but I just am curious, how is the rate determined?
Uh, it's determined by Brown Physician Group, um, probably based on national, um, standards.
So it's not a negotiable rate?
No, and they, by getting those eleven hours, it takes away from their clinical requirements, so they don't have to necessarily work in the ER as much. They can spend more time working for the department.
Sounds like a good deal. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion on this, uh, resolution, I'll take a motion to approve it. So moved by Counselor Shaw, the second by Counselor Bolio, all in favor to approve, say aye, any opposed? Uh, the, uh, resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. Uh, do you have the next one as well, Chief, or do you want me to skip and get all yours out of the way?
Uh, that would be, uh, great. Uh, the next one I would have is.
Down here, twenty five forty-three?
Yes.
If there's no objection, I'm just going to go to twenty five forty-three while the chief's here. We have a resolution authorizing power Mayor Jeffrey J. Mutter to enter an agreement with Quinn Flow, Inc. to purchase three Warrior Light Blood IV Fluid Warmers in the amount not to exceed fourteen thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars. Chief does it.
So part of a new initiative, which we've, um, haven't officially rolled out yet, um, is carrying whole blood on our ambulances. If you remember, a couple of, uh, town council meetings ago, we, uh, submitted, uh, a resolution to purchase three specialized coolers for our ambulances. Um, those will allow us to keep blood at specific temperature, um, in requirements for the blood center. The blood has to be kept between one degrees and six degrees Celsius. These coolers are, those coolers are very precise. Um, when administering the blood, it needs to be warmed prior to administration. So these warmers will warm the blood as it's being infused, um, to the patients. So it doesn't, prevents against any additional hypothermia, um, which is common in traumatic injuries and critically ill patients. So using these same, same grant funds will be used to purchase, um, these, uh, warmers.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions of the chief on this resolution? Hearing no further discussion or comments, I'll take a motion to approve.
Come up.
So moved by Counselor Bolio, second by Counselor Shaw, all in favor to approve, say aye, any opposed? The resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you.
Stay there, Chief. We're going to move down to, if I'm correct, forty, twenty-five dash forty-six?
Yep, forty-six and.
Okay, we have a resolution authorizing powering Mayor Jeffrey J. Mutter to engage construction junction for repairs at fifteen twelve Menden Road for sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars with a town contingency of ten percent for a total not to exceed sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and eighty cents. Chief.
So this, uh, resolution ties in with forty-five dash forty-seven. Um, so I'm happy to announce that, uh, last month, we were, um, awarded a hundred and seventy thousand dollar grant from Lowe's, um, hometowns for facility upgrades at our fifteen twelve Menden Road Station. Um, these grants are part of a five-year, one hundred million dollar investment by Lowe's that is focused on rebuilding and revitalizing communities across the country. Uh, we were one of one hundred grants that were awarded. This grant, identified and pursued by Deputy Chief Levake, will enable us to upgrade the flooring while also replacing the aging HVAC system. The contractors for these resolutions are on the state NPA list and represent the best pricing from quotes that we received. Uh, specifically, we'll be installing luxury vinyl tile in the first floor and, uh, second floor classroom, along with new mini-split heat pumps in both areas. Uh, other areas of improvement to be covered by the grant include upgrades to the sleeping area, new gear lockers, appliances, exterior signage, and landscaping. Take any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions of the chief on this resolution?
No, just a congratulations on the grant.
Thank you.
Do you have a question, Ma? No, no, oh, I'm sorry. All right, if there's no further discussions, I'll take a motion on resolution twenty-five dash forty-six.
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Bolio, second by Counselor Shaw, all in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The, uh, resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. Chief, stay with me. I'm going right under it, correct? Resolution forty-five forty-seven?
Yes.
We have a resolution authorizing powering Mayor Jeffrey J. Mutter to engage Cam HVAC and Construction, Inc. for the replacement of the HVAC system at fifteen twelve Menden Road for forty-one thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars with a town contingency of ten percent for a total of forty-six thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars. Chief does it.
Basically the same, same, uh, spiel I just gave, so, um, it's part of, it says.
Does anybody have any questions for the chief on the same spiel? With that said, I'll, no further discussion or comment, I'll take a motion to approve. Motion by Counselor McGill, it was second by Counselor Shaw, all in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The, uh, resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, moving down, we're going back to resolution twenty-five dash thirty-nine. I bet you weren't happy when I did that, were you, Director?
I'm here for the direction.
I thought you were, that's why I did it. So anyway, we, we're back at resolution twenty-five thirty-nine, a resolution authorizing powering Mayor Jeffrey J. Mutter to enter a renewal agreement with Open Gov for software service in the amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars and six cents, Director.
So this is just a request to renew the agreement we already have with Open Gov. There are software that allows for e-permitting and licensing. It allows town residents, um, to go through the process of, of permits and things like that right online and to pay online. Um, the only change kind of this year is we're adding a new module for the planning department, so, uh, um, planning certificates and stuff like that will be able to be handled online as well.
Is, is there a transaction fee at all? I, I know it's probably in there, no, if they pay online there?
I don't think. Percentage?
Is it?
Yeah. Two or three percent.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions of the, of the director on this? There's no further discussion or comment, I'll take a motion to approve. So motion by Counselor Shaw, it is second by Counselor McGill, all in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This, uh, resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. We're moving down and, uh, you can get Ms. Malloy on, on Zoom, uh, Madam Clerk. We're moving down to resolution twenty-five forty. We have a resolution authorizing powering Mayor Jeffrey J. Mutter into a contract with Active Network LLC for collection service fees related to the recreational program. Are you gonna, uh, will Ms. Malloy be able to explain this, the whole thing, Mayor?
Hi. Hi, Mr. President.
Welcome back, Ms. Malloy.
Oh, thank you. So good to be back. Um, so Active Network is the same software that OCYL uses for their registration for all of their programs. Uh, I met with the representative, representation of, um, Active Network, and I also did a survey where I asked approximately sixty people who have taken, um, participated in parks and recreation programs, you know, like what can we do to improve our department? And most of them said that the number one critique was that we do not offer any sort of online registration. After speaking with Active Network, they would waive their fifteen dollar, fifteen hundred dollar onboarding fee, um, and they would set up our website for us, and essentially what they would do is train us in how to establish these programs for ourselves. If people want to, they can still mail in their registration. They can drop it off at our office, or they can put it in our Dropbox. Um, but we would like to use Active Network and build our programming over the next few weeks, so that way when the fall rolls around, we can launch all of our fall programs and start registration then.
Any questions?
Just a comment.
Yes.
So this is something the council has asked, uh, the administration about for probably more than a few years, so really excited to see that this capability will be added. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions of Ms. Malloy? Thank you again, uh, Assistant Director, and we will now go to, uh, a vote here. So if there's no further questions, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Bolio, second by Counselor Shaw, all in favor to approve, say aye. Any opposed? The vote passes by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you, Mackenzie.
Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Okay, moving down on our agenda, we are now at resolution twenty-five dash forty-one. We have a resolution approving the financing of the construction, renovation, improvement, alteration, repair, furnishing, and equipping of schools and school facilities throughout the town by the issuance of not more than fifty-two million of dollars in general obligation, bonds, notes, and other evidence of indebtedness to finance the construction, renovation, improvement, alteration, repair, furnishing, and equipping of a new elementary school and other related school facilities, and the demolition of the existing elementary school on land presently occupied BF Norton School in the town, provided that the authorization shall be reduced by any grant received from the School Building Authority Capital Fund. Mayor Mutter.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. So resolution twenty-four forty-one is the, the final step. Uh, we are at the, uh, place where we, where we need to, um, secure some funding, uh, for this project. You will remember that this, um, that the council, uh, voted to put it on the ballot back in November of twenty twenty-three. And it passed in a nearly two to one, uh, ratio, and so this is the final legal requirement that, uh, we need to actually start to borrow these funds. Um, at this point, it looks like, uh, and I think it was, I think it may have been mentioned back, uh, when we discussed the funding, it is likely that we will be using a, uh, you know, a bond anticipation note first, as opposed to a, you know, a full-fledged permanent, uh, borrowing, uh, similar to what we did, uh, for the previous, uh, bu- uh, borrowing, which was seventy-nine million dollars. We actually borrowed seventy-four million, one twenty-five. But, uh, so this is required for us to begin the process and, uh, the way it is scheduled is sometime in August, I believe, is the, uh, is, would be the closing, but we need council approval on twenty-four forty-one to fund the project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Gee, they're just catching up a little bit here. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this from the mayor? No. Counsel Bradley.
Mayor, are we still projected to be at that rate, that amount for the whole project?
What rate is that?
Fifty-two million that we're borrowing. Is?
Yes.
That, we're still on target for that price?
Yes, but we have to be. That's the maximum.
And I did ask this, uh, Mayor, your counsel, that we are on rate as a, uh, we will be getting probably roughly about fifty-seven percent of that back. Is that accurate to say between fifty-nine and fifty-seven, fifty-nine?
I, I think, uh, I think the more likely scenario is, is not fifty-nine. I think the more like fifty, between fifty-four and fifty-seven.
Thank you.
It would be very similar to, uh, the way
Eighty-three?
we had structured it, right, that there was going to be, there's kind of got, going to be this bump, then there was going to be this down, and then there was, so you're not going to fully borrow this probably till twenty twenty-seven, maybe? So in that borrowing, you will roll the interest from the bond anticipation note into that borrowing, so. But effectively, it's going to be, you're going to, uh, you're going to run into the same situation that we kind of ran into, uh, in FY twenty-five, but it'll be FY twenty-eight, FY twenty-nine. There are other borrowings that are dropping off during that time, so. But as we've seen, you know, reimbursement on the housing aid, having to be substantially complete by a certain date, you know, it matters, uh, and it, and, uh, you know, it matters in the, uh, ability to pay and in the tax rate, so. But yes, we, uh, if, if we were under the best-case scenarios, we're looking at a little bump in, uh, FY twenty-eight, FY twenty-nine. You withstand it for a couple of years, and then at that point in time, you, we should be breathing a little bit easier, uh, on, on the debt service line.
Thank you. Any questions on the mayor, of the mayor? Hearing no further comments, I'm going to take a motion to approve resolution twenty-five forty-one.
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Sweet, second by Counselor Shaw, all in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. Moving down to resolution twenty-five dash forty-two, we have a resolution authorizing powering Mayor Jeffrey J. Mutter to enter in a contract with Haynes de Bora, uh, Architecture for Architectural Services related to the Franklin Farm Bond in the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars with a ten percent town health contingency in a total amount of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. Is Mr. Mudge, uh, joining us from, oh? Yeah, thank you. Matt, it's good, Ms. Bissett, welcome.
Uh, my name is Matthew Bissett, Sixteen Rowley Inc., cause Drive, a member of the, uh, Franklin Farm Building Committee. I'm here to report on behalf of the building committee that we met on July ninth, reviewed the Haynes de Bore, uh, proposal for architectural services related to structural assessment and rehabilitation of the Long Barn located at Franklin Farm. Uh, we found the proposal to be fair and reasonable. Uh, we recommend approval. We, we voted to approve it and presenting it to the council to make a final approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bissett. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Bissett on this?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counsel.
There's no further discussion by the council, I'll take a motion to approve. Motion by Counsel McGill, second by Counselor Shaw, all in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance, excuse me, the resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. If you're following along, we took care of resolution twenty-five forty-three. We are moving down to twenty-five, uh, forty-four. We have a resolution authorizing powering Mayor Jeffrey J. Mutter to purchase three. Kind, what, what was it? What kind of copies are these?
Conica.
Conica, Manolte's, uh, Bizhub's C three O eleven, or three zero eleven copies printed scanned for various town departments in the amount not to exceed seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, forty-eight cents. Um. Mayor, are you handling this one, ma'am?
I believe I am. Uh, so resolution twenty-five dash forty-four, I think this one is, uh, pretty self-explanatory. The three departments, the Tax Assessing Human Resources, Water Department, uh, they have reached their offerable life, and so we are in that situation where we need to replace them. Bay businesses, uh, we have an agreement, uh, and contract with them for, uh, I'm sure quite a few years. Uh, as our vendor, and so they have provided that quote, as you see, twenty-three ninety-six and sixteen cents per machine, which will be expensed out to those departments in monthly payments of ninety-nine. which will be expensed out to those departments in monthly payments of ninety-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. We respectfully ask passage of Resolution dash twenty-five forty-four. Thank you.
Any questions of the mayor on this resolution?
I have one. So just real quick, do we use as much paper as we used ten years ago or we still do? Okay, that was it. Thank you.
We, we, we definitely do. I, I like to use paper.
Oh, well, we can work on that. Thank you.
I, and I, I understand that these just are non-fixable, right? These were brought during the McKee administration. Is that accurate?
I, I believe, yes, we've been told that they've been kind of, uh, I forget the actual terminology, but you know, you're kind of like taking from one and, you, you know.
Yeah.
You're going to the boneyard, you're, you're putting it together as much as you can. Not anymore. It's done. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a.
No further discussion?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Council.
Um, I, I didn't notice it in here, so sorry if I missed it, but how will the existing machines be disposed of? Is this company taking care of that? And are they then therefore responsible for making sure that all data that might be captured? Thank you.
Good question. I don't, that's a good question. Yeah.
Ms. King is nodding at me. Yeah, actually, uh,
So the answer is yes.
Discreet equipment like that can be a big security risk, so we want to make sure it's properly disposed of. So thank you, Ms. King and the mayor.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion or comment on this, I will take a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five forty-four.
So moved.
So moved by Council Sweet, second by Council Shore, all in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. We are moving down to Resolution twenty-five dash forty-five. We have a resolution authorizing power Mayor Jeffrey J. Mutter into a contract with Digger's Landscaping for the connection of the property located at four forty High Street to the town sewer system in the amount not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
Well, that's.
I'm sorry, twelve thousand, nine hundred. Romeo, thank you.
Council President, uh, council members, uh, some years ago, uh, mid-eighties, um, town sewer system was being put in place. Uh, the plan was to, uh, bring the sewer line that comes up High Street through the intersection at Dexter and High Street. And I don't know why or who decided that it wouldn't, uh, uh, go through, but the, the sewer line did not go through that intersection, hence did not pass four forty High Street. Um, and they now, uh, want to connect to the sewer, um, have the ability to, as all other residents in Cumberland who, uh, have sewer lines in the vicinity, uh, have the ability to. Um, so in lieu of, uh, coming up with a very, um, labor-intensive and difficult plan of extending the sewer line as it should have been back in nineteen eighty-six through that intersection. Uh, um, we had a, a meeting with the neighbor, um, that's adjacent to four forty High Street. And that neighbor has agreed to allow access through his property so that four forty High Street can connect from the sewer, to the sewer line on Dexter. So that cost is, uh, been bid and it's twelve thousand, nine hundred was the lowest we received as opposed to eighty-five thousand, ninety thousand to continue the sewer line through the intersection. But we thought that that was a better alternative, and so that's what's before you.
Is it?
And we're, it's, we're putting the lateral in from the sewer line in Dexter to the property line, and then the resident is taking it from the property line to his house.
That's what I was gonna ask, Director, is there a cost to the homeowner? We're doing this because we messed up in the eighties?
Yeah, his, his cost would be, you know, what, what, it's not equivalent because in nineteen eighty-six
Yeah.
to bring from the lateral that we would have left into his house would have cost a certain amount. And obviously, it's, it's more costly now, but he is, he is willing to bear that cost.
Any questions of the director?
Is this the only property affected that way?
Uh, to our knowledge, yes. The other properties that did not have lines running right by them were able to be connected from a side street.
Okay.
This is the only one that fell into a gray area, but luckily the neighbor has solved the issue.
Thank you, Director. Mr. Bradley.
Were they charged a sewer assessment in the past?
They were, they have not. They are going to be once they're connected to the sewer.
Right, but when they run the line past your property, well, whether you tie into it or not, you always paid an assessment.
Right, so because that line never went by their property, they, they've never been captured.
So we're paying to tie them in, though?
We're, we're paying to, we're paying for the, we're gonna put in the lateral to the property line. And then they will be charged the assessment, begin to be charged the assessment.
And how much is that assessment?
I believe for a single family, it's, uh,
You talking the assessment or the permit?
The, the permit is something, uh, that I'm not totally familiar with. I'd have to, I'd have to check with, um, the sewer superintendent. But the, the, both of them come into play. The permit, we're, we're going to absorb that cost along with the installation of the lateral. The assessment will begin to be charged as soon as the hookup is completed.
Okay. So any other questions? I'll take a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash forty-five.
So moved.
So moved by Council Sweet, was that second by Council Nativia? All in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution passes by a vote of six to one with Council Bradley in the negative. Moving on, we already took care of forty-five forty-seven. That will bring us to public comment. Would anybody in the chamber like to address the council on any comment? Mr. Ford.
Uh, Peck Ward, as a Copland's Lane, Cumberland, I just have a very brief statement. Uh, Councilor Chair Kench, I'd like to thank you and your council for your hospitality this evening. Extending time, being the only town council aware of that offers multiple public comments and impressively opening the floor to questions of a vendor are outstanding examples of, as the kids say, understanding the assignment. Kudos. And what seems like a lifetime ago during the McKee administration, the Ross and Pond Bridges were in need of serious repair and probable replacement. Proposal was put in place to widen the lanes and lay down asphalt. Local residents feared that the widening would create a high-speed corridor to a then-viable Emerald Square Mall with traffic attempting to avoid the warm embrace of the North Attabour law enforcement community. Residents rose up, re-renaming the corridor the Lonesome Pine Connector and taunted Mayor McKee at the Arnold Mills Parade, calling him Mayor McCheese. The result? The wooden bridges that were built helped retain the rural character of the neighborhood while simultaneously acting as a traffic calming device. Finally, we ask that you exhibit that same care here. Please work to restore Ross and Pond to its former glory. The pond is an integral part of life in Arnold Mills and its surrounding communities. Short-term solutions seemingly fiscally prudent will serve only to diminish Cumberland, leaving behind only memories of a community that embraced a world charm that was a special place to live. Thank you all tonight.
Thank you again, Mr. Ford. There's no further comments, anyone in the chamber? Anybody?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can't. Welcome to the Cumberland Town Council. Would you mind stating your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Ted Vecchio, five eighty-four Bound Road, Wintock, Rhode Island. Uh, I was just, uh, commenting because Dance Theater of Rhode Island, uh, located in Cumberland on thirty Martin Street will be attending its fifth consecutive World Dance Championship over the next two weeks. And I just wanted to let you know that, you know, we're hoping to bring, um, a world championship home to Cumberland this time. Every year we've gone, we've, uh, come a little closer. Last year we had three second places, so this year we have thirteen shots and, um, just wanted to let you know that we're hoping to bring one home this year.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vecchio, and I'm sure we wish you the best of luck. Did someone?
I just said, good luck.
Oh, yeah. No, we, uh, we all wish you the best of luck as always, and your organization has always been a pride of the community, so thank you. Um, any other, anybody else joining us? Okay, with that said, I'll move on to adjournment. So does any, I'll have a motion by Council Shore to adjourn. Who, second by Council McGill, all in favor to adjourn, say aye. We are adjourned, thank you. We are adjourned by a vote of seven to zero at nine thirty-two PM.